Item on the agenda is the readout from closed session. Trustee Withrow, if you could do that for us, please.
Madam President, at this evening's closed session, we had a recommendation to appoint Dr. Eric Gravenberg as the interim Deputy Chancellor, District Office, effective the 2nd of February of 2015, up to and including the 30th of June 2015, at a salary of $204,287. This was passed, six I's, zero no's, zero abstentions, and one absentee, trustee Galasa. We had a recommendation to appoint Rebecca Lacocke as East Bay Career Pathways Trust Program Director, District Office, a grant-funded position, from 28 January 2015 through and including the 30th of June 2016, at $113,493. Six I's, zero no's, zero abstentions, and trustee Galasa was absent. We also have an announcement that in light of the chancellor's retirement announcement, the board is beginning the process of conducting a search to recruit and select the district's next chancellor. The selection process will be handled as outlined in District Board Policy 2431, which I might add has been scrubbed extensively. We are considering a timeline that will allow us to have a new chancellor in place in July, and have scheduled a special board meeting on the 3rd of February of this year, to consider search firms to assist the district in a nationwide search for qualified candidates. Also, in the closed session, the board considered appeals of two administrative determinations. In the complaint appeal number one, the board voted to affirm the administrative determination with a vote of six to zero, again with trustee Galasa being absent. In complaint appeal number two, A and B, the board voted to affirm the administrative determination with a vote of five to zero, with one abstention, trustee Handy. And that's the end of the report. Madam President.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second it, ma'am. Sure.
We have a, it's been moved and seconded, and we have a call for discussion. Trustee Oliver.
I'd like to remove items number 11 and 20 for discussion.
What are those items?
Can you read them out, please?
Number 11 is, "Consider approval of course and program additions, deactivations, and changes," and 20 is, "Consider approval of the non-resident tuition fee increase."
Okay.
So we'll pull items 11 and 20 from the consent agenda for discussion. We're pulling items 11 and 20 from the consent agenda for discussion. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt our agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? The motion carries. The next item is the approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's been, we have a second. Moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any call for discussion? There being no discussion, I call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. Do we have any speaker cards? I do not see, looks as though we have no speaker cards, and then following that is the reports. Associated Student Government reports. Do we have any Associated Student Government reports? Okay, chancellor reports.
Thank you very much, President Brown. This evening, I'd like to defer to chancellor's reports, starting with our interim vice chancellor of finance, Susan Rennie, who will report on some concerns expressed by trustee Oliver, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, and her actions to address that.
Thank you, chancellor. I'm going to do a brief report tonight on the Associated Student Bodies and the movement of the funds into the Fund 71, and where we're at, and what we're working on with those, with the Associated Students. As stated by the chancellor, previous meetings, there was concerns expressed by trustee Oliver and other students regarding the movement of their funds into the district funds. And a couple of the concerns were that this was done in, basically in isolation and without their input, and also that the district was basically like moving their money and they wouldn't have control of it. So what we're doing is, I actually met with the Merit Associated Student Body yesterday, and I have met with all of the business managers, and we've outlined a process in which we believe will work going forward. We, I do admit that, and we did do this in isolation, it was something that was not discussed with the students. However, going forward, students will definitely have a voice in this. It was something that was inherited. It was decided upon a couple of years ago that this process would begin. So our board policy 5240 states that Associated Student Funds shall be deposited and dispersed by the district. On March 11th, the board took action to establish Fund 71 to comply with this. And the intent of that fund was to record all ASB and trust funds in the district funds, and to abide by that AB, the board policy 5420. One of the things that this was also trying to address was consistency within all the campuses. Different campuses had different regulations and rules, not regulations and rules, but they were operating things a little bit differently at each of the campuses. We do have one campus that is unique, and they do have a 501(c)(3), and I am still working on, working on the regulations with them, trying to make sure that they fall into the same compliance issues and everything as all of the other ASBs. The, the one thing that I have concerns about is in the 501(c)(3), because they would, if they are a five, oh, because they are a 501(c)(3), they have a separate tax ID number, and I'm not sure if they would fall under the umbrella of our liability insurance and those types of things. So I'm looking into that with our auditors and some legal counsel. So I'm, I don't have a full report on that yet, because I don't have the results as of yet, but I'm working on that. The resolution that we've come to with the business managers, and I will say that I have, we have two campuses that have moved, one campus has moved all of their funds into Fund 71, another campus has moved all but a couple of funds, because they have a few outstanding checks still with their ASB accounts. And then I have two that are in the process, one of them is the 501(c)(3), and we're working on that, and then the other one we're working on. So we're, everyone is, is working on getting their funds there. But what we've come to a resolution, one of the concerns that the students had, had was that the money would not be readily available, that if they needed something, they wouldn't have the ability to walk in and get a reimbursement, or an advance, or something of that nature. So what we're looking at doing is establishing a petty cash account at each of the campuses for the ASBs, and that way, those funds would be available, and to me, that kind of seems like a win-win situation. Now, we will have to draw up some procedures and processes to make sure that it complies with all the current petty cash board policy, along with some other items. So that's something that we want to bring the students in and the directors of student life in together, and make sure that those policies conform, and are a win-win for both situations. We will have ongoing meetings. I've sent, I've requested a meeting with the directors of student life at each of the campuses, along with the business managers, to get together and make sure that we are addressing the needs of the student life directors. Once we have a uniform approach to go forward, we will then have a meeting with all of the leadership of the ASBs, and also include them, and have their input on whatever draft policies we have at that time. So that's where we're at. We are trying to address it, and like I said, we did move forward. Those funds were directed to be moved without the, the meeting, but with the, moving forward, we will definitely include students.
Thank you, vice chancellor. Are there any questions from the board at this time?
Just want to thank you, Vice Chancellor Renee, and Chancellor Ortiz, and our student trustee Carl Oliver, for pursuing this issue until we reached this point. Do we know, and this was, the petty cash process was done in consultation with the students?
Not as of yet. It's something that we're proposing to them to have a win-win. We haven't had, I haven't had that meeting with the students, other than Merit's ASMC yesterday, and they were in agreement that that would work for them, but I haven't addressed the other three campuses yet.
So we are intending to meet with each college and their Associated Student Group to propose and hear from them about the handling of their funds. But what I've asked the vice chancellor is to strive for consistency for all four colleges as much as possible, but we certainly want to accommodate the students' needs, and that's what we're striving for.
Thank you, Chancellor Ortiz, and vice president, vice chancellor Renee.
So, thank you, and I'd like to now turn to President Debbie Budd from Berkeley City College, who is going to present two grant applications and the narrative behind that.
Thank you, Chancellor Ortiz. Berkeley City College would like to let the board know that we are planning to apply for two grants. Actually, a third one has just now become available that's linked with one of the ones on the board agenda, so I'll start with that third. We have a career ladders project that we've had for the last several years that is linked to learning, and both Merit College and Berkeley City College have that with the local high schools, as well as our multimedia program. An SAP, that is an enterprise software program, is looking at how they can develop a training program for those students, so combining multimedia arts with computer science, which is really exciting. So that's a new one that has just come up. In addition, we have two other grants. We have a trio renewal that is just up, and that is a million-dollar grant that's spread out over five years, and trio is a Department of Education grant, and that was, that became known as a trio for the three different types of grant, talent search, upward bound, and a student support services program. We currently have the Student Services Support Program, and we're expanding that to help first-in-the-family-to-college, disabled students, low-income, and build a culture of STEM at Berkeley City College. So that's the emphasis of that grant. And then the second grant is one from the San Francisco Foundation. It's $25,000 that's going to help our public and human services with grants. So we're really excited to have been asked for a few of those to apply, and wanted to make sure, to share that with the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Budd. I want to actually pick off where I left off last meeting, because I wasn't here for the last meeting, and I didn't have an opportunity then to welcome our new president for the College of Alameda, Dr. Jordan Blake. Dr. Blake, welcome with us. I also want to, this evening, introduce our acting general counsel, who is here, Natasha Soni. She's taken over for our general counsel, Tweene Nguyen, who, as many of you know, has been assigned to be the president of the California, I'm sorry, the Community College League of California in Sacramento. She will be on a leave of absence for about six, I'm sorry, nine months, and we're going to rely on Natasha to help us keep it together. I also want to welcome two of our guests from Washington, D.C., Rick Spees, who is making a presentation. He's with Ackerman and Associates, and his associate with, with him this evening is Jane, and I always forget Jane's last name, so I'll call her Jane Doe.
Sergeant.
So Jane.
Sergeant.
Oh, so, what is it?
Sergeant.
Saunders.
Sergeant.
Sergeant, right, like the sergeant. Okay, Colonel, well, thank you for being with us tonight. And Eric Gravenberg is here. He's assigned this evening to be the interim deputy chancellor, so Eric, thank you very much for being with us. And last but not least, we have Rebecca Lacocke. I hope I said that. I see you back there. Rebecca has been approved this evening to be the director of our CBT grant, so Rebecca, thank you very much for being here. And that is the end of our reports.
Thank you, Chancellor Ortiz. Ms. Lacocke and Dr. Gravenberg, could you stand up? And, and thank you for being here, and welcome again. Welcome again.
You know, and I do want to say that, Rick, that was the most inspiring, pleasure of allegiance I've heard in a long time, so thank you very much for that.
So the next item is the, thank you very much, chancellor, and vice chancellor Renee, and Dr. Budd, for your presentations. And the next item is the board of trustees' report. And we'll start on the right with trustee Withrow.
I was one of, a number that went to Sacramento over the weekend to, and it was literally over the weekend, to attend the CCLC Triple CT Conference, Legislative Conference. And we interacted with a number of our elected officials and staff members from the Assembly and Senate that addressed a number of issues that are focused on education, community colleges, as well as K through 12. It was an upbeat meeting, and our revenue supplied by the state, the governor, has gone up by 39 percent, so we, we have every reason to be very happy. Thank you.
Trustee Oliver.
For my report, I'd just like to say, I'm just kind of disappointed. I was told for the past few meetings that the Student Government Funds would be on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. It was stated earlier that moving the funds March 11th at the board meeting was not consulted with, with students, but in Title V, Section 5102, 3.7, it states, "Except in unforeseeable emergency situations, the governing board shall not take action on a matter having a significant effect on students until it has provided students with an opportunity to participate in the formulation of the policy, or procedure, or the joint development of recommendations regarding the action." So it doesn't sound like you guys are supposed to take action on the matter without consulting us, but you did. You know, as a student leader, we don't really feel valued. I mean, I was, I sent the email, the first email about this, June 5th, addressing the concerns about the student funds being moved. You know, the concerns were never addressed. You had students coming to a board meeting, kind of upset that the funds are being moved. And, you know, if the funds, the concerns were addressed in the first place, then, you know, student leaders probably not would be, probably would not be upset that their funds are being moved without their permission, or without their recommendation, or whatever you want to call it. They didn't, didn't come today, so that's probably, probably not too happy with the district. So yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, as a student leader, we're not really feeling valued here. We're supposed to be kind of treated as equals in the shared governance process. We don't really feel like that. For example, there's a district flex day, presentations were given by shared governance leaders, students weren't part of, you know, weren't on that list as shared governance leaders, so that kind of speaks volumes right there. If the district doesn't value us as shared governance leaders, to put us on a list as shared governance leaders, kind of says a lot. So yeah, just like to, that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me.
Trustee Bonilla.
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to share that I am a little bit disappointed. I feel that trustee Oliver definitely has some issues that we need to seriously consider and think through more thoughtfully, on how we come to resolution on some of the issues that trust, that students are impacted by, especially as, as we want to consider and ensure that, that students are valued. And one of the things that I think I want to share with you, trustee Oliver, is that I was inspired this past weekend, because I also attended the Community College League of California's Effective Trustee Workshop, and there were a number of student trustees that were, that were present, that were very active, and, and I was somewhat disappointed that our Peralta Community College trustees and students trustees were not in attendance at this conference, but I would imagine that in the past, they have been. But of course, I definitely look forward to having more dialogue with you about, about student issues. The conference was, was invigorating, the spirit was uplifting, there was a general sense that community colleges and the state funding towards community colleges is heading in the right direction, which is up, and so this is good. And it was a, overall, it was a very informative conference. Thank you.
Trustee Handy.
Again, I had the opportunity to attend the conference as well, and at one of our sessions, one of our speakers was saying, "It's really nice to stand there and deliver good news." And it truly is to see that we're finally getting the funding that we need, that we can do some of, replace some of the things that we've lost. It's, it's been a very, very hard past five years. And this session, as, after he said that, I looked around the room, and I realized, this is just very different. There's hope, there's hope for change, there's hope for refunding all types of collaborations that are going to go on, go forward. So just glad to know that we've gotten over the hump, and that we're going to be able to do some of the things that we need, and have the funding to do some of the things that we would, that we really need to do with our campuses. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, trustees. I also had the opportunity to attend the California Community Colleges League Conference in Washington. One of the purposes of that conference is for training, and also for the opportunity to advocate on behalf of the community college that you represent with our elected representatives in the state assembly, and we did have an opportunity to meet with our representative, Rob Bonta, who is always welcoming and supportive of us, and he's working on some issues that we hope can provide support for our faculty, and our staff, and our administrators in their delivery of educational services to our students. And we, some of the training was particularly focused towards serving the large demographic that we have, that needs, training in, in areas of, of basic skills, and also in job training, and we had explored opportunities for apprenticeship and training on apprenticeship. And our, among our goals are to build better bridges with our business partners, and I know that we have Rebecca Lacor as one of our steps towards that, in our CTE grant, and we also have the work of Karen Engel and many community-based organizations that are working with us. So it was a good opportunity for us to get more detailed technical training on the issues that we've undertaken as a community college, and to understand better as elected representatives, how we can advocate for and support the delivery of educational services to our students. So thank you. That concludes the board of trustees' reports, and now we have the academic senate report.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. On the first professional development day this semester, our keynote presenter, Mr. Kevin Powell, brought us an impassioned and informed rationale on the critical importance of equity, equality, and of all things, love in what we do as educators. Looking through a distinctly multicultural and diversity-sensitive lens at the state of human rights and the state of our educational curriculum, Mr. Powell challenged us to find meaningful ways to include the lived experiences of our students in how we teach, regardless of what we teach. Thanks to Peralta TV, this keynote is available for viewing online, P-SPAN episode number 406, and I strongly encourage you to watch and reflect on it, especially if you did not hear him live. Even those of us who were in the theater when he spoke would benefit from reviewing his cogent and inspiring words. Certainly, I have. At this time in our nation's history, when the president of the United States highlights the need for and importance of a community college education in his State of the Union speech, and when so many of our communities struggle with and protest against the inequity and injustice that too often results in the loss of precious lives, Mr. Powell's message about our role as educators in preparing the next generation of leaders is essential information that warrants an attentive response. Still, on the flip side, the young people of whom Powell speaks, faced with mounting student debt, food, housing, and health instability, too often drop out of college, sometimes rejecting the value of a college education that appears to be irrelevant. In the words of former student Sophia Stoll, quoted in a recent NBC News report, "Not only is the thought of returning to college anxiety-provoking, to her, it's also, quote, 'a waste of money,'" end quote. How can it be that something as essential as formal education is considered by those who seem to need it to be irrelevant? Almost simultaneously, U.S. News &amp; World Report announces that community colleges' students are in demand, in businesses and four-year colleges, precisely because of their tenacity and ability to juggle multiple responsibilities. Reflecting on Powell's message and a comment from one of the audience participants helps me to make sense of this paradox. The audience member said, quote, "We need to retain these students. We're losing them at an alarming rate. I think it's because we don't provide the necessary tools for them to succeed," end quote. Powell agrees, and he sees those necessary tools embedded in the real-world experiences of our prospective students' lives, and our ability to integrate them into the curriculum of study. He emphasized that the way to show our respect for the humanity of our students is to make sure that people who look like them are included in the curriculum of study, no matter what the subject matter is. "What kind of humanity are we going to put forward?" he asked. "What is it that you are actually doing that is so out of the box, so outside the norm, that it will actually capture the imaginations of young people, that they will fall in love with education, the way he did? It takes a special effort to make sure that those who are disenfranchised are not invisible any longer," another quote from Kevin Powell. Further, he says, "If you're an educator, and you have not paid attention to the fact that the dominant youth culture on the planet since 1978-79 is hip-hop, then you have clearly not been properly educated. If you're talking about reaching younger people in this time, you have to incorporate hip-hop, social media, technology, and anything they're into." He says, "I would ask students straight up, 'What are you passionate about? What do you love?'" Because with hip-hop, you get to talk about race, and gender, and class, and materialism. Even if we don't understand the culture, we have a responsibility to learn it. Why are they so into this, and for so long? In his exposition of the isms that divide us, Mr. Powell suggested that we who are educators would become better educated ourselves by watching an independent film, one of his contemporaries produced that was broadcast on PBS stations in 2007, Beyond Beats and Rhymes, a film about hip-hop and its relationship to all of the isms. You can watch it online for no cost. Immediately after listening to Powell's talk, I watched the film he recommended, and based on some of the learning outcome results from last semester, I have included an analysis of that film among the assignments that students will complete in social psychology this semester. In Powell's words, "Education is holistic, and we need to have the humility to understand that the role of an educator is to be a student for the rest of your life." The real responsibility of a leader, including educators, is to create other leaders every single day, somewhere in America, from black kids, white kids, Asian kids, Latino kids, send him emails saying how hurt they are, how wounded they are, how confused they are, that they don't know what to do with their lives. Because, in his words, "We've done a piss-poor job of educating them and teaching them that education is about love and your development for the rest of your life." You want to know why there's so much mayhem going on in our communities? Where's the guidance? He challenged us to have honest and healing conversations amongst ourselves that will begin to facilitate our ability to successfully engage and inspire the biggest and most diverse generation of America we have ever created since World War II, the millennials. We must ask ourselves, "What toolsets am I giving these young people every single year to make sure they can..." to make sure they can go out into this world and lead it to where it must go if we are to survive?" That's a question that I'm reflecting on every day, and I encourage all educators to join me in that. Thank you for paying attention to my report this evening. That concludes it.
Thank you, Dr. Bunputin. That concludes our reports, and now we move on to presentations on our agenda. The next item is the Federal Legislative Update.
I want to point out that I'm Rick Spees, and Jane Sargent is here. If there's any tough questions, direct them to Jane. When we first were asked to come back here, I was told there might be 20 minutes to discuss. I got here and I realized there was five minutes for our discussion. And I said, "Jane, how can I discuss everything I know about higher education in five minutes?" And she said, "Trust me, there'll be time left over." Anyway, I just want to, thank you very much for having us here tonight. The goal that we have for Peralta is to, taking a word, a phrase from the President, box above our weight. I mean, here we are, and we're on the West Coast, we're a long way from Washington, and the whole idea is that we want to make an impact on the policy of the, of the government as it proceeds and, and really have an impact. So, the way to do that is to have articulate advocacy, focused efforts, and shoe leather. And I want to thank the chancellor, and I want to thank the trustees Brown, and Handy, and Witho, and Riley, and Glossop, who've all been to Washington in the last year and have walked the halls with us, met people with us. We've seen people in the agencies, we've seen people in Congress, we've seen people, Republicans and Democrats, House and Senate, and it's been, it's been a good basis for what's going to happen. An example of why we think this is successful is the ability to benefit. As many of you folks know, the, it was one of the Pell Grants went to students who didn't have a GED, didn't have a high school, if they could demonstrate they had the ability to benefit. That was stopped in 2012 as a budget-cutting measure, and Peralta, out at Merritt, had the Maximum Achievement Program. It was a model for the whole country. I don't know if you remember, but Secretary Duncan came out here, he had a speech, talked about how this is the kind of way we should go forward. And Barbara Lee was here, and it was a very successful event, and the Congress cut it off. And we decided, really from the day that they cut it off, we were trying to get it back in. So, we really took a lead role. We got Congresswoman Barbara Lee to ask questions to Secretary Duncan, and he answered them very honestly, that this was a mistake and Congress shouldn't have, but it was a good, good intake and the appropriations. We had meetings with Representative Lee last February. I think a lot of you remembered, it was right before the big snowstorm, and we had a conversation with her in the hall, and we asked her to, you know, keep pushing this program. Subsequent, on that very afternoon, she made a, had a conversation with Secretary Duncan, said, "You've got to keep pushing this. This is very important to us." There were meetings with Patty Murray, and the reason that that's important is that Patty Murray, on the Senate side, was taking the lead on restoring it. So we, we went to talk to her, and we said, "Look, we have a member of the House that's interested, you've got a, you've got a senator that's interested, we want to do something together." And we had a really good meeting with her at that point. We met with the Deputy Assistant Secretary of Education, and then we had further meetings in October and September. And finally, in the appropriations last year, that passed in December, ATB was restored. And, look, we were not the only people doing it. But what we did do is we provided support and practical experience, and, and we worked, particularly with the Senate, the, the version that passed in the bill was the Senate version, not the House version. Barbara Lee actually had a more broad version, and she would have liked the broader version to pass, but we were able to help broker a deal with Senator Murray, and the thing got passed. So I think it was a real success story, and it's a credit to the, the institution. A second is the Trade Adjustment Assistance in Community College Career Training Initiative. I think if you remember, Commissioner Trust, Trustee Handy and we were there in Barbara Lee's office, and they said, "This is coming out. Let's, let's get together, let's make this thing work." We said, "That's great." And then the announcement came out, and Peralta had been part of a previous version of that, and, and President Bud had been very instrumental in that whole thing. And then we had a conference call with the biotech industry to kind of demonstrate what our capabilities were. Barbara Lee was actually on the House floor, she came off the House floor and got on the call. We had a conversation, and, and the grant application was submitted. We had lots of support from the delegation, and as you all know, in September 2012, in fact, when, again, Trustee Handy was out there for the CBC Weekend, it was announced, I don't know if it was announced because she was there, but it was, it happened at the, that's right, Dr. Jackson was with us. And it's, you know, $15 million over five years. So it was, it was a consortium of a lot of schools. And again, Dr. Bud took the lead in writing the application, and she did a great job, and we're really pleased that it happened. So, and now, as you can see, there's a whole number of other activities that we've done. We've met with the House, we've met, and again, this is, this is not just talking to our friends. We have talked to extremely conservative Republicans. Virginia Fox, on the House side, very conservative, but a former community college president from North Carolina, her staff met with us. We looked for ways to find ways that we could agree, and we agreed on things like less reporting, and, you know, we were really making some common ground. We did letters to Chancellor Harris, we did, and as Commissioner, Trustee Rithwell, we were at the meeting with Chancellor Harris, with Barbara, Barbara Boxer, a year ago, and that was a very successful meeting. And we've had a really good meeting with the accreditation group, at the Department of Education, and also with the VI folks. So, we have really set the stage for this year. And again, again, we've had trustee meetings, and there's a whole list of members of the, of the House and the Senate that are here. And so, we've set the stage. And this year, over the next two years, I believe there's going to be more that's going to occur in the higher regification world than a number of years. You're going to, I think they're going to reauthorize the Perkins Act, they're going to reauthorize the higher education, they're going to re, they're going to take a look at the Pell Grants. And of course, overlaying all of this is the President's initiative for community colleges. The President did a very bold statement on community colleges. We haven't seen all the details. They're not going to come out, they're going to come out in the President's budget next Monday, but some of the details will come out even after that. And it's a very bold statement. I think it is beyond the bandwidth of Congress to fund, but it has got the discussion going of what we should be doing with community colleges over the next couple of years. And with all these reauthorizations and all these initiatives from the, from the President, this is the next couple of years, we're going to, we're going to really have to make our case, because whatever comes out of the next two years, they're going to finally authorize these bills, the Perkins Bill, the higher education, they're going to do student loans. What comes out of this thing in the next years is going to guide us for the next five or six or seven years. So, this is the time to make our case. We've set the table, we're ready to go, and we look forward to working with you. We're going to see the President's budget next Monday, we're going to see the details, we're going to see the first initial responses by Congress. We're going to put together a really good one-pager that focuses on what the, what Peralta's real wish list is. We're going to take it to the Hill, take it to the Department, take it to the Association of Community Colleges, and really have a very successful year. I'm very confident of that. So, thank you very much. You have any questions? They take more than five minutes, Jane?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Do you have a question here?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your support. So, on the, the community college reduction in fees that the President has mentioned, is that modeled on the governor from Tennessee? Because I know they've stepped up in the, in the state to look at that.
It, it, yes, and the short answer is yes. The more, you know, there's, the Tennessee has nuances that the, that the White House doesn't have, but certainly, what the President said is, and he tries to do this in what all of his initiatives, is, "Don't make this a partisan thing. Point out where Republicans have supported things like this in the past." And the Tennessee initiative is one that goes along the same way. Now, what the President is suggesting is different because he's got a cost share with states and some other stuff, but yes, trustee, that he is building off of what the Republicans did, and, and I think that's a very good political statement to do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda earlier, the reports listed, and if you'll give us a moment, Vice Chancellor Akaro, our student, Associated Student Government Representatives are here. And if we've, if we could have these reports at this time. Thank you very much. If you could approach the mic and say what school you're representing and your name, please.
Hello? Okay. Hi, I'm Imong Lee, Senator External Affairs from ASVCC. Thank you for the time and coming back to the item. First, I'd like to address two events that we're planning on. It's Black History Month. Funding has been, has been passed for this huge event. It's going to be on February, every Wednesday and Thursday, there will be poetry performances, and we will have keynote speakers. We're really excited about this event, a lot of planning when to create this. If you would like more information, I would like, just give me your email, and I'll definitely forward you all the information on it. Also, we're developing, we're on the developing stages of Mental Health Awareness Week. This event is targeted to reduce stigma, to reduce stress through fun events, and to build a more accepting community. Our vision is so far is to have speakers for different, from different outside nonprofits, from our LGBTQIA club, ethnic groups at our campus. We also want to have workshops about things ranging from time management and how to reduce anxiety to, to workshops about consent. We're looking forward to reach out to our faculty and administrators about this project for support. This is one of my many passions as a student leader, and this is where the reason I pursue a public health degree. Mental health is so important, because we all have mental health, right? But we all fail to, we always neglect it as students. There, there has been a lot of research showing that a large percentage of college dropouts drop out because of the lack of mental hygiene. So I am really glad to bring this project forward to my peers, so they have the tools and information to succeed in college in terms of mental health. Other projects, other projects are still in the research process, and will be presented next time. This is for now, this is all for now. My name is Imong Lee from ASVCC. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee.
Good evening, board members, chancellor, presidents, and district. My name is Adrian Jackson, I'm the ASMC Senator. And ASMC had its first meeting on January the 26th, and we are cosponsoring the Black History Month. We have five additional clubs rechartered, Anthropology Club, Chess Club, Ceramics Club, Administrative Justice Club, and Pruning Club. We have a total of 22 active clubs and five pending status. ASMC has successfully met with the Business Office and District Interim Vice Chancellor on 126, but we still have pending information, pending some information we need. Students have also met with the Business on separate, the Business on separate occasions and are moving forward with procedures to improve efficiency. ASMC voted on increasing our budget. ASMC also is preparing for elections. We also are sponsoring Bobby Seale Art Contest, which is to be unveiled at the end of February. Today, club, we had Club Rush. It was a success. We have 15 clubs attending, two community agencies, those agencies were Cover California and City of Oakland ID. ASMC ICC fed over 300 students today for lunch. Campus license, life is increasing, and event planning is coming as follows. February, we have Black History Month, we have the Black Califor, we have the Black Caucus of California Community College District coming to have that conference at our school on February 13th, 14th, and 15th. March will be Women's History Month, April will be Cesar Chavez Celebration. We would like to acknowledge and thank Dr. Chavez for the interim, the interim Director of Student Activities and Campus Life for providing ASMC with guidance. She has implemented an internal infrastructure and is constantly developing new procedures that have improved our office efficiency and campus partnerships. In addition, she has been instrumental in increasing the overall student engagement in clubs. The SMCE Board will restart their office hours at our new space provided by our college president. We would like to publicly also thank our President, Dr. Calafis, for listening to us as students and being supportive of our concerns. So I thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Dr. Akaro, if you could present your report now.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, college presidents, vice chancellors, most importantly, Vice Chancellor Otis, and members of the public. This evening, the chancellor has asked that I present the Measure E drawdown to the Governing Board of Trustees and the community that we serve. So thank you for giving me that opportunity to do so. For historical purposes, Measure E was passed on November 7th, the year 2000, by the cities that we serve, cities, communities that we serve, which are essentially Albany, Berkeley, Emeryville, Piedmont, Oakland, and Alameda. And you have over 650,000 households in this constituency that voted for the sum of 153,200,000. And the vote was 79.2 percent, which made it to third majority, to third requirement for such an election. So we are grateful to the community for making those funding available. But the, the report tonight is to give the community, the board, and the stakeholders, what have we done with that money as an organization? So here I have a table of contents, and there are two definitions that I tend to, there are two definitions that I tend for us to recognize. One is accorances and expenditure. By using the terminology accorances here, it's going to show essentially that there are some goods and services that the district has either received or that we have taken title to such type of goods and commodities. And by using the word expenditures in this definition, we're going to indicate that there are some assets that we have purchased that need expenses paid, or that we have liability for those type of assets. So there, here is a summary of how the bond was sold. Back in 2001, 27,500,000 was sold. In 2002, 30 million. 2004, 40 million. And the last bond that was sold is 50, is 2005, July, was 55,700,000. So that was the total of the bonds sold. Now, there has been interest on that money over time, and this is represented as, as the balance that we have for these numbers. So, now we want to look at where, what other source of funding was utilized by the district during this period of time. As you may recall, there were state funding that came in during the construction of the Berkeley City College, formerly known as Vista College. So this state funding information here came into the district to be able to augment Measure E. And then also, we did have an amount that came to Lenny College that, that we are funding from the state. Most of this money that came to Lenny, by the way, came through Caltrans, because Caltrans needed to do renovation of the Fifth Street and Ninth Street exits in this area. So the Lenny Annex that used to be on the other side of the freeway was moved to the main campus or rebuilt, while the land over on the other side of the freeway was leased. So the funding from So the funding from that came from the state to be able to augment Measure E to do the Lenny Art Annex. Now, this is a breakdown of how much each square footage area that the colleges have. So you're going to see the word assignable square footage area. And when we use the terminology assignable square footage area here at ASF, that is the actual area that is occupied either by faculty, or for instruction, or library, or the visual, and that is defined at the bottom of the page. This information that I'm presenting here is available on the State Fusion website. And Fusion is housed at the San Joaquin Delta Community College. So as you can see here, the land mass, overall, in terms of square footage area, is Lenny is the biggest, with 544,000 square footage area, followed by Merritt with 360,000, College of Alameda 297, and Berkeley City College 165. When Berkeley was first constructed, the square footage area was 87,000. But there was a tenant improvement, 1, 2, and 3, that increased the assignable square footage area now to 118,000. Then what is happening at the colleges? Berkeley City College, as we indicated, got an allocation of about 19.6 million from Measure E. The state allocations for the college was 54 million, for a total of 74 million. Most of that money, and all of that money, has been expended. And the building was open on September 19, 2006. Now, there is parking mitigation fund that is, was also made available at that time. The amount was 3.5 million, but plus interest, it stood, it now stands at 4.1 million. That is the only amount of monies that is now available for parking mitigation for Berkeley City College. And that is how the breakdown of both the state monies, Measure E monies, and the combination of both Measure E and state monies comes out to be what is indicated in these graphic balances. Now, let's go to College of Alameda. College of Alameda had a total of 22 million. And there were no state funding during this period of reporting time for College of Alameda. And the reason primarily was that when the science building at College of Alameda was designed and was supposed to benefit from the, from the state, that was back in 2006, 2007 school year, the state never went out for any new facility bond. That is why there was no state monies for College of Alameda. And most of the money that came to College of Alameda was utilized for the modernization of Building A, which has combination of student welcome center. The upper floors have clinic, dental clinic that serves the public, and then you have counselors and other area, administrative areas and Building A. Some of what is being allocated here was for Measure Building C and D, and that has been used mostly for architectural design services and the plan to be able to build a new Building C, which I presented to this body in December. Those are the drawings for College of Alameda. Then Lenny College. Lenny College got 20 million out of Measure E. And then the state allocations for various items here was 37 million. I want to, I want to indicate that this state allocation for college, for Lenny College represent 22 million out of the 37 million, represent the amount that has been pledged by the state to be used for the new library, Lenny Resource Center. But until the state goes out to actually have a facility bond, that money has not, is not in the district. The only amount of money that came that was utilized for construction during this era from the state is the 14 million that, the 15 million that came from Caltrans to be able to replace the Lenny Art Annex. So that when we have 37 million there, you place in the, know that the 22 million has not been funded yet from the state, but it is anticipated that is a commitment. All right, so these are the total amount for Lenny College. Then Merritt College got 33 million from Measure E. There were no state monies here. And the biggest part of this was Building R, which is part of the Student Center. And then the Barbarite Science and Allied Health Building benefited mostly from Measure E. So these, these are the various expenditures, college by college. Now, there were district-wide items. When I use the terminology here, district-wide, these are services that are housed in the District Administrative Center, designed to benefit all the colleges. In other words, the services that were rendered here were for Lenny College, Merritt College, College of Alameda, and BCC. So not the District Administrative Center. So I wanted to make that distinction, so that if you see an amount here for Measure E, it does not mean that it was spent here. All right, so the total amount here for Measure E was 58 million. And these monies were utilized for IT. And IT here meaning that they were what you call college main point of entry, technology for every campus, where materials were procured, and the services rendered to be able to make that possible at every college. Then you have roofs, that was done by the Maintenance and Operations Department, their securities, and other overheads that we are paid so that the supervision of this project would be accounted for and be leveraged, rather than hiring outside consultants for all the work that needed to be done. So this is a sort of recap of the total amount of monies that I presented for each college. Now, the District Administrative Center received 1.6 million of, out of the 152, 53.2 million. And this is where the monies were spent. So the overall recap of Measure E, including the interest, is, and accoibrances, and commitment that were made, is indicated in the, on this page. Now, the, this information is available on the Department of General Services website, so that if anybody wanted to go into, look at details, it's over there. Then there is also a summary that I describe, say, a recap, that is just one page. It's also a recap, one page, that has all the information that is also available on that website. And anybody who wants any more information regarding to this topic, the Department of General Services would be glad to provide it. Any questions, please?
Actually, I have a question, Dr. Accaro. About three slides back, there was the list of overall district expenditures.
Yes.
Back beyond, back again. Again. One more, one more. Nope, there we go, that one. I have two questions. One is that has AC Transit student bus passes listed under the District-wide Capital Projects. And can you just help me, help clarify that for me? And then the category miscellaneous, what that would include?
What, what we did at this, what the district did at this particular time was that, in order to be able to fulfill the sustainability aspect of getting our students out of driving cars to come to school as part of sustainability, the expenditures were incurred to be able to do like racks for bikes, for those that are going to be riding bikes through, in transit, to be able to come to the district. So part of that cost was incurred to be able to install some of those racks and to be able to get, fund the development of the plan to have AC Transit for students. And some of these monies, I believe, went directly to AC Transit as part of the contract that was made at that time to begin the project.
Was sustainability projects and traffic mitigation projects?
Yes.
Okay. And then what's under the miscellaneous category? That's a 3.1 million dollar line item.
That could have varieties of, of overhead that was paid. For instance, if you hire the services of a consultant to be able to do master planning, to be able to do master planning, and you pay the monies out of that, it will fall into that category. For instance, for instance, there was what you call collaborative planning whereby the Lenny College area along the SRA, along with the District Administrative Center, was planned and zoned and documented, and that type of, the payment for such type of plan would come from this type of fund.
Thank you, Dr. Accaro. Do we have any other questions? Trustee Withrow.
Thank you very much for the report, Vice Chancellor.
Thank you.
You've mentioned that it's on websites and therefore it's available to the public.
Yes.
Is there a reporting mechanism on this particular bond issue, where you report it to someone in a governmental capacity and say, we're putting this to bed?
No, there was, because the bond passed with 79%, there were no citizen oversight committee requirement. And there was no, there was no evidence or be able to report this to any governmental agency. But what we had done throughout the bond was to have newsletter that goes to the community, like public libraries, like the mayor's office and other agencies, so that the public can be able to see what the money was used for. But to answer your question more directly, there are no requirement for reporting to any governmental agencies.
Is this something that Mr. Hayman can put into some sort of a report?
Yes.
To put it into the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and, and.
I think it's, I think it's important.
Yes.
Because we're going to be going back out to the public here.
Yes.
For a little more money to complete a lot of the projects that we thought we had funds for.
Yes. And the next board meeting, the request of the Chancellor and the Governing Board of Trustees, we'll come back to present Measure A to the, to the, to the Board and the community.
Thank you, Dr. Accaro. That was, Vice Chancellor Accaro, that was a very thorough report.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. And all of the work of you and your staff that's gone into getting our capital project to this point. So the next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. And we've moved two items, 11 and 20. Do we have a motion to adopt the Consent Calendar?
So move.
Can we get a second on that motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second, moved by Trustee Riley, seconded by Trustee Handy, to adopt the Consent Calendar. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Next, we'll go to our Action Calendar. And the first item on the Action Calendar will be Item 11. Is there a motion to adopt Item 11 for the, to begin conversation? It's been moved in second to adopt Item 11, which is consider approval, of course, in program additions, deactivations, and changes. Call for discussion. Trustee Oliver?
Yeah, so I moved this off the Consent Calendar, bring for discussion, because at Lenny, we've had a problem with students have had an issue with the Curriculum Committee at Lenny. The Academic Senate felt that the, that the Curriculum Committee is a faculty senate, faculty-only committee, but in Title V states, you know, just like faculty has a 10-plus-1, students have a 9-plus-1, and two of those nine are curriculum development and courses or programs which should be initiated or discontinued. So we have not been allowed to vote this year in the Curriculum Committee. They reached out to other colleges to see if it's practice on all colleges to vote on the Curriculum Committee in the district. And they say, no, students don't vote on that committee either, although in Title V we have, you know, it says in Title V that we are allowed to make a recommendation or be a part, you know, joint, have, be a part of the joint development of curriculum or programs to be initiated or discontinued. And we have not been able to, our rights have not been met, it's Title V. It's not like it hasn't been broken before, but, so, just kind of, that's why I put that off the Consent Calendar.
Thank you.
Just to bring that to your attention, like I said earlier, it also says in Title V that except for unforeseeable emergency situations, the Governing Board should not take action on a matter having a significant effect on students until it has provided students with an opportunity to participate in the formulation of the policy or precision, procedure, or the joint development of recommendations regarding the action.
Chancellor Ortiz, would you like to give us a background?
Well, at this time, I, not knowing the details, I just believe that Trustee Oliver should address this issue with Dr. Webb at the, at the campus. And I'm sure they will resolve and attend to the Title V language, I believe.
I don't, I don't feel that.
Trustee Oliver?
I don't feel it's a, it's a college issue. It's pretty much maybe a district policy should, or procedure should be in place to allow students to be at, you know, to say what committees, students, students should be voted on, just for the future, maybe, you know, just so this problem doesn't happen again. I don't know. But I think it is a district problem because, yeah, I just think it's, maybe the district should handle it, not the college, because of the problem of, at all four campuses, not just at one campus, so.
Well, it is the district philosophy that students participate in the shared governance environment. And that includes the shared governance committees. Now, the Academic Senate is a separate body, and they respond to Title V as they address the 1 through 11 items. I don't know if they include students in that discussion, but Trustee Oliver is correct that students should have a voice in actions, decisions that affect students. So if the Curriculum Committee, I don't want to speak for the Curriculum Committee at Lenny, and Dr. Webb, you may want to respond, but there is a mandate for student participation.
I think that, the chance of my may, I think you directed that back to the campus, and I think we shouldn't be debating that here, you know. Yeah.
Dr. Webb, had you wanted to make a statement?
I'd like to just share with the entire body of the Board, as well as our Chancellor. So thank you, President, that our faculty has heard our ASLC President and Trustee, and in fact, said at our last General Governance Meeting, College Council, that they look forward to entertaining a greater discussion around this matter. So they weren't close to the possibilities, but they wanted to make certain that it was clear that the primacy of faculty in developing the curriculum, whether it's for courses or programs, because of their particular expertise. Yet they also made it very clear that they welcome students' interest in being part of the Curriculum Committee, and they would consider having students have greater voice that may include up to voting. So it's important to share that.
Trustee Oliver?
So yeah, I get it. Like I said, I don't think it should be pushed off the. So yeah, again, like I said, I don't think it should be pushed off to Dr. Webb. She's a strong advocate for student voice in the shared governance process. I really feel like I'm bringing this up, so it's a district policy, it's a district matter. There is, there's currently, there's a district policy, it's policy, it's board policy 2510, participation in local decision-making. Yeah. And there is no procedure with that policy, so maybe there should be some procedures that says, you know, who votes on what committee, how many people from each, from faculty, staff, and students are voting on the committee. So that would be great if there's a clear procedure. You know, the academic senate does say that, it does say in Title V and ed code that faculty are primary for curriculum development. Primary doesn't mean only, it just means main, not, you know, just not excluded, so.
So at this point, it appears as though we may need a little bit more information and background, and I'd like to refer this matter back to our chancellor to-
So the district administration will follow up on this and come to a conclusion as soon as possible.
So at this point, we could call a question and go to a vote on item 11. It's been moved, moved in second to call the question. So the question is called. Now we vote on item 11, which again is consider approval, of course, in program additions, deactivation, and changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have on the action calendar is item 20.
So move.
Which is, moved in second, consider approval of non-resident tuition fee increase. Call for discussion.
So, thank you. So the reason I put this item is because last year around this time, I wasn't student trustee, I would come make public comments, and this was on the board agenda last year, and I made a comment about international students and their tuition increase. And you guys did say it's a, it's a state matter that automatically increases. I agree with that, but my concern that I addressed was how are the international students at Peralta being served? There's an international program at the district or the international office, and I've spoken with various international students. They don't feel properly served with the amount of money they pay. I gave a breakdown of if a student, student worker, international students can't work outside of school, when they work at school, the most hours they can work is 20 hours a week. If they save up every dollar throughout the semester, you know, they could pay, maybe pay their tuition, find some way to pay rent, all that stuff, but I would just really brought it up to see how the international students are being served. If you're going to increase their tuition, they pay higher tuition. They need, they need more resources, more resources than local students, I feel like. Also, trustee Withrow, maybe in June or July, board of trustees meeting, I think he asked at two meetings that a presentation on an international program be put on the agenda. I think he asked about twice, and he never got put on the agenda. I know how that feels, though, it's cool. So I just really want to bring up the fact that, you know, maybe it should be looked at if the tuition is going to get increased for international students, that more resources are provided to them.
So chancellor, do you have any information on that?
Well, you know, my only response to this is that keep in mind that a non-resident tuition is charged because the state does not provide apportionment for non-resident, whether it's out of state or out of a country. So the tuition rates that we charge a non-resident student is essentially the equivalent of state apportionment for our in-resident student. So all students are treated the same in terms of wraparound services, support services. Our international students get the same services that our resident students, so we do not have any special programs, other than our international students' office, which tries to facilitate as much as possible their coming here and their acclamation to our, our colleges and our environment here. But it is not tuition used for special programs.
One, and there were two elements to that comment. The other was regarding our, our agenda calendar, and I believe we have met and worked out administratively the items that we're going to try and get on the agenda over the year. Do we have an idea of what place or time that international program is going to be arriving on our agenda?
I don't have that information at this moment, but we will check with the International Education Office and get back to you on that.
Yeah, and I think we probably, we, I know we have discussed, we've tried to plan out what we're going to cover over the year to get our regular business done, as well as to report on our special programs and areas of focus in the, in the college. So we'll get that information on when that's listed, what part of the, what month or time that's listed. Trustee Oliver?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I don't feel international students are the same as every other student, and maybe I can talk to a few international students at Lenny or across the district to come tell you their story and what they go through and why they need more resources than any other student, including someone like me. So, thank you.
So now we have a motion. It's been moved in second to call the question. The item on, for vote is consider approval of non-resident tuition fee increase. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our action calendar for the agenda for this evening. Do we have any, well, actually, the first announcement, I should say, is that trustee Nikki Gonzalez-Vian was under the weather. He came to the closed session and did not want to make everyone, make anyone ill, so he left before the public session, but he sends his regards, and he would not have left had he not been suffering from something he called the plague. Do we have any announcements?
Yes, we do, Madam President. As I mentioned earlier, we have a special board meeting scheduled for the 3rd of February to discuss the search firms that we're intending to put in place for the chancellor's position. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be held on the 17th of February at the district offices. The board wishes our students a wonderful semester in their educational pursuit and social endeavors, and a reminder that the Peralta College's Foundation Scholarship Dinner and Fundraiser will be held on Thursday, the 5th of March, at 6:00 PM at the Marriott City Center. And for tickets, please contact EARP Events and Fundraising at 510-839-3100. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.